I'd like to welcome you all to the New Britain Board of Education meeting held on May 6th. The time is 6:03 PM. All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Ramsey, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Edwards, roll call, please.
Vice President Joseph Listrow.
Here.
Vice President Barbara Marino.
Here.
Secretary Diana Reyes.
Here.
Anthony Kane with the C.
Yo.
Salmo Escobalas.
Here.
Anthony Kane with the K.
Here.
Annie Parker.
Here.
Joaquinna.
Here.
Jose Rivera.
Here.
And Mistina Santana.
Right here.
And a moment of meditation. Thank you. Next item is public participation. I would like to remind anyone participating that you have a time limit of three minutes. And I'd like to remind the board that board members cannot respond, but we will be listening intently and we'll address your concerns after tonight's meeting. The first person I have on our list is Gabriel Alvarez.
Want I just stand right here?
Yes.
May I ask something? So, I know this time limit is three limits, but my sister wanted to come up and speak, and I wanted to do a combined testimony, if that's okay? So, six minutes.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Yes.
Just to give you guys a brief introduction of who I am. Hi, my name is Gabriel Alvarez, and I'm a seventeen-year-old senior at New Britain High School. I'm the brother of Athena Alvarez, who was a student at Pulaski Middle School. I would like to thank everybody who's present, listening to my family and me speak. We wouldn't have been able to address the problems my sister's experiencing at Pulaski without your attendance and attention. It is greatly appreciated. I would like to start by saying I'm tired. I'm tired of my sister constantly feeling unsafe. I'm tired that some of the overseeing adults of Pulaski Middle School are failing to recognize the consequences certain students should be given. I'm tired of my sister walking in the front door every day when she comes home, explaining another problem that should be solved at school. I'm tired of the people in charge not being held to a higher standard for their own behavior. I'm tired of policemen having to come into my own home because of the situations that aren't handled professionally and appropriately. I'm tired of the impact that these situations are having on my family, and I'm tired of knowing that she's not the only student who is going through this issue. Just a few months ago, I dislocated my shoulder on one of the biggest nights of my athletic career, and my sister was right there beside me. She was so empathetic for me at that moment, knowing that my high school wrestling career was over, that she was bawling her eyes out for me. She wanted to tag along for the ride to the hospital, but she couldn't. So she waited until I came home at midnight from the hospital to greet me, asking if I was okay. My sister is one of the kindest, sweetest, and most thoughtful people who I've had in my life. I remember she was, when she was born, when she took her first steps, when she said her first words, when it was her first day at kindergarten, and so many other great memories. Growing up with her was a blessing nonetheless, and as her big brother, seeing her bullied, harassed, and disrespected in Pulaski Middle School makes me concerned. I went to Howes Academy, and it was a completely different experience from what I'm hearing Pulaski is in its current state. In New Britain schools, students shouldn't be pummeling each other in the face and sending it all over social media in an attempt to embarrass each other. In New Britain schools, there shouldn't be students throwing chairs across the room without consequences. In New Britain schools, there shouldn't be the use of vulgar language of students and physical violence towards teachers. In New Britain schools, students shouldn't be able to make death threats to other students and administrators. In New Britain schools, students shouldn't be catcalling their classmates as they see them walk by. But this is what happens at Pulaski Middle School. This has not been the ideal environment for my sister to feel safe and secure while pursuing her education. I remember my sister coming home one day in emotional distress because the teacher wasn't listening to her. After Athena thoroughly expressed her confusion to the teacher, she replied by saying, "That's not my problem." Athena was genuinely upset that she wasn't heard and her problem wasn't taken into consideration. Another time she came home saying that there were kids fighting in a classroom, and that when the teacher went to separate them, she was assaulted by one of the students, and then they continued the chaos until security arrived. Speaking of security, in the high school, there are at least ten different security guards that I see day to day that I casually greet as I walk by in the hallways. In a school of around twenty-four hundred kids, that means there is one security guard for every two-hundred-and-forty students. In Pulaski, now there is only one security guard, and the school contains around nine-hundred students. The ratio of security to students in the high school is much greater than the ratio of that in Pulaski Middle School. This needs to change. Seeing my sister come home in tears sometimes because of how glad she is to leave that building and be home is truly heartbreaking. She deserves to be in a place where she is excited to go, to see her friends, to learn, and to become the young lady and be educated into the young lady that she is in society that we live in today. I now pose a couple of questions for you guys to consider. If one of your siblings and/or child was put in a position where they didn't feel comfortable and felt that their safety was inadequate, how would you react? How would you feel if your younger sibling and/or child was being disrespected and catcalled in the hallways of their school? How would you feel if your younger sibling and/or child was confused and needed assistance in a classroom, but the teacher didn't hear her quote-unquote "problem"? Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of my sister. But I'm not only speaking for her, I'm speaking for all the students of Pulaski Middle School who may not have the parents that I have, and people who will stand up to make what's right and make a difference. We need to give these kids hope and pride in their community, similar to the one that I had in middle school. I met some people along the way who have given me that hope and pride, such as Mr. James Jones, Mr. Kevin Williams, Mr. Edward Dickman, and the names can go on. Without those individuals, I don't think I would be standing here before you today. Some kids just get so lost and forgotten in the system that they figure, "What's the point of trying to stand up and make a difference if no one cares to listen?" Well, we need to start listening. We need to start coming up with different solutions to these problems, because what we're doing is not working. These kids are living in endless cycles, and it's our jobs as citizens in this community to make it better little by little every day. As I make my exit from New Britain High School in this town that I call home, I hope to come back to this community and see that our words weren't taken lightly. Right now Pulaski Middle School is heading in a direction that isn't positive, and we need to do something about it. This cannot be continued for my sister, nor the rest of the kids in that school. And we need to give this city the TLC it deserves to reshape this town into the place that I know it can be. My name is Gabriel Alvarez, and thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is Stephen Alvarez.
Hello, board members. My name is Stephen Alvarez, those are my children, Athena and Gabriel, and my wife Melanie is right here. Imagine the anguish of sending your child to school each morning, knowing that instead of being in a place of learning, it's become a battleground for fear and discrimination. This is the grim reality comforting far too many families in our community, including my own. I stand before you not just as a concerned parent, but as an alumni of New Britain schools. I attended Vance Elementary School, Pulaski Middle School, and proud graduate of E.C. Goodwin Tech. Now thirty-seven years later, I found myself facing the same environment I encountered as a child in my city. And I say "my city." I am also an eighteen-year-retiree and two-time combat veteran of both Iraq and Afghanistan. And it breaks my heart to the core that I have to see those atrocities over there, and not only, and only to come home and now console my children through the atrocities in this city. The disparity in districts is nauseating at best. The district has successfully segregated the middle school population into two groups: those who are set up for success and those who are left to survive, Pulaski and Slate. What happens to those who are left to survive? My daughter Athena should be greeted by the promise of education and opportunity. Instead, she navigates a hostile environment where the joy of learning is overshadowed by the specter of violence and bigotry. Athena has endured the pain of bullying, the torment of threats, and the indignity of racial and gender-bias harassment. She's faced the theft of her food, the erosion of sense of security, and most recently, the chilling fear of a death threat aimed at her life and another one of an admin. These atrocities are not isolated incidents, they're symptoms of deeply ingrained culture that plays Pulaski Middle School. The culture not only undermines the educational experience, but also perpetuates racial discrimination and other discriminations, denying our children the right to learn and grow free from prejudiced and fear. As a parent, I see her not only for my daughter, but every child who deserves a school where their race and their differences is celebrated and not targeted. It's time to confront the harsh realities facing Pulaski Middle Schools and the other schools that are in this district and demand an urgent resolution, demand an urgent, resolute action to protect the dignity and future of all of our children. We are not without evidence, we possess over a dozen videos showcasing senseless violence of students assaulting each other over and over again without a single administrator in sight. These videos are not mere documentation, they are stark reminders of the failure of our educational system to provide a safe and nurturing environment for our children. The violence captured on these recordings is not an aberration, but a symptom of a systemic problem that demands immediate attention and action. The Board of Education seems to have adopted a pattern of inertia perpetuated by a revolving door of administrators. Each new leader promises change, yet time and again, we witness the same cycle of inaction and indifference. Instead of taking decisive steps to address the root cause of violence and discrimination, they pass the buck to their successors, leaving our children vulnerable and our community in turmoil. This pattern of negligence is unacceptable, must be met with accountability and reform. Our family has endured both abuse and neglect at the hands of the school's administration and New Britain Board of Education. Despite our efforts to seek recourse, there is no formal grievance policy for parents towards administration, further displaying the administration corrupt ways of masking and avoiding accountability. This lack of transparency only serves to perpetuate a cycle of abuse that allows the administration to evade responsibility of their actions. Moreover, our son Gabriel, who's diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, has suffered the same abuse from New Britain administration for the past fourteen years. He has faced legal, he has, he has had his legal rights under the American Disabilities Act violated and faces, and faced instances of paraprofessionals. Instead of providing him support, have him fallen asleep during their workday, and we have pictures to prove that. The negligence is not, not only undermines Gabriel's education and Athena's education and experience, but also highlights a systemic failure of the administration to prioritize well-being of rights of students with disabilities and differences. Pulaski administration has not once reached out to our daughter as the victim to ask if she needs anything or even if she's okay. Instead, it seems like a gag order has been put across the board. So while the administration is busy protecting their careers and best interests, my eleven-year-old innocent girl sits in the middle of this. Let that sink in. In conclusion, the time for complacency is over. We cannot stand by idle while our children's safety is being, or while our children's safety and well-being are compromised. It is time for the Board of Education to fulfill its duty to this community by enacting meaningful change and ensure that every child, regardless, race, ability, or background, has the opportunity to learn and thrive in a safe and inclusive environment by the law. The future of Pulaski Middle School and the future of the public schools in New Britain depends on it, and so does the future of our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, Melanie Alvarez.
Good evening, tough act to follow with both my son and my husband speaking so passionately, but I will say we've been longtime New Britain residents, fierce advocates for our children. We believe that all children deserve the right to have a free, fair, public education, and we appreciate all of your efforts in doing that. I will tell you that our son Gabriel is a shining example of what can happen and what is possible, regardless of a diagnosis, when the proper support and, and safety are put in place for a child in this district. You heard him speak eloquently, I will not repeat what he said. However, he is graduating New Britain High School this year as a child with high honors, National Honor Society, and many other accolades. Our daughter, who is neurotypical and very bright, has not been afforded the same opportunities as him, and we don't have the same leverage under the law to be able to get her needs met. Unfortunately, the light that she has in her has been dimmed by this system, and none of us should be okay with that. The environment at Pulaski, you've already heard, is very concerning, and I want to really implore upon you the disparity and the experiences we had between Howes and Pulaski. It's unfathomable, and it's heartbreaking to know that our daughter hates school as a result of that experience, and would text me routinely while she was there to beg me to pick her up because of the violence and the harassment that she was experiencing. Even though the bullying investigations that she has had are supposedly unsubstantiated, I don't understand how sexual harassment, ongoing harassment, theft of property, and death threats can be unsubstantiated. They are very much real, and they are her experience. And every time we speak our experience into existence, we are told that our experience is not true. It is true, it's very true, it's very real, and it has an impact. We are exhausted, we're extremely disappointed. We have given thousands of hours of our personal time to this district, participating in not only PTOs, but assisting with the high school wrestling program and many other things. We are servants in this community, and it is sad for this community that you will be losing a great family. Because we have decided, after almost two decades of living in this city as a result of our experiences in the school, to leave. But we were not going away quietly. Many of our friends have had similar experiences and did not want to stand before you guys and tell you guys what exactly was going on. We are not going to do that. We are calling for immediate action from this board. We want a thorough investigation of Pulaski and everything that is going on there. Each bullying complaint needs intense scrutiny, and the policies and procedures of this Board of Education need to be evaluated. If there is no way for a parent to formalize a complaint, be oriented to a complaint procedure, and understand what is expected of them as a parent, nothing is ever going to change. Most parents will not get up and stand here. Either they are unprepared, or they just don't feel like anybody's listening, and they are also equally as exhausted as we are. However, if this scrutiny and inquiry does not happening, I'm fearful that you will see a level of violence in the next couple of years at New Britain High School that will be absolutely unmanageable. No child or family should have to deal with what we have dealt with. The details are, I will leave to private discussions. Anyone on this board who wants to reach out to our family for further conversation, I'm happy to have those conversations with you. We advocate not just for our child, but for all of the children whose parents are either unaware or unprepared to have these conversations, or simply feel that they're not heard, so why bother? We need to change the narrative of this city, and I respectfully request your assistance in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address the board? And just please state your name.
Hello, everyone, good evening. My name is Perla Vanessa Cardozo, and yeah, I live on 111 Brookside Road. I'm gonna say my testimony, or what I have to say in both English and Spanish to be inclusive, right? There's also Spanish speakers here. So yeah, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Perla Vanessa Cardozo, y yo vivo en la calle Brookside, aquí en New Britain. Tengo una hija en la YWCA, y soy miembro del grupo de manos unidas aquí en New Britain. Somos un grupo de padres, hijos, inmigrantes, y aliados aquí en New Britain. So, como nueva mamá, luego me pongo a pensar de dónde quiero poner mi hija, verdad? Y luego me pongo a pensar de las escuelas aquí. Yo me gradué de aquí, yo me mudé hace, hace más de diez años, y mi experiencia fue igual como la que está diciendo la familia aquí. Era muy similar, verdad? Pero por lo menos ellos tienen la fuerza, y yo no tuve la fuerza, yo me quedé callada, verdad? Yo, yo en la high school pasé por muchas dificultades por, por ser familia inmigrante, y por eso estoy abogando, verdad? Ahorita estamos, somos un grupo de padres que no tenemos apoyo en traducción, verdad? Especialmente los nuevos que estamos llegando, y no hay apoyo de cómo conocer como padres el sistema educativo aquí en los Estados Unidos, verdad? Y especialmente para nuestros muchachos, verdad? Hay un estudiante aquí en high school que igual ha pasado por muchas cosas, pero igual quiere, quiere aprender más, y como dijo los padres aquí, hay muchas peleas. Dijo que en los pasados dos días han habido veinte peleas, en dos días, verdad? Y es como, es como, eso no es, no es, sí. No es seguro, gracias. So yeah, gracias, y este, I'm gonna say them in, in English. So my name is Perla Vanessa Cardozo, I live in 111 Brookside Road in New Britain, Connecticut. I'm a member of manos unidas. I'm also a mom to a daughter who goes to YWCA. So us in manos unidas, we're a group of parents, of kids of immigrants, and allies. So I'm here just to, as a new mom, right? And also listening to the family that also share their experience. That's literally what I went through, but they have way more courage because my family couldn't, because we were immigrants, right? Because we were scared of what would happen. And we don't even know what's in this building, right? This is, they're, some of their first time here, right? And, right, so, shout-outs to them, but also that wasn't my experience, right? I didn't have no counselor to tell them about my dad, about being deported, right? I didn't have any of those resources, right? I didn't know where to go, right? And that's why I'm here, right? I'm here with parents who is their first time here, who are concerned because there's no translators at schools, at the high school. There's no support in how to, how to better support your, your child in, in the education system here in the U.S., right, as immigrants. And also, there's a senior here who's present who has shared with me that in the past two days, there's been about twenty fights at the high school, when there are nine, more than nine security guards, I feel. There's also police presence, so what is, what are they, what are we getting paid for? Should we get resources, or should we keep paying for security guards, right? So as a new parent, I encourage you all to meet with us. Again, we're a group of parents here in New Britain, and yeah, let's connect, because, oh yeah, we ready, we're coming.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address the board?
Hello, everyone, good evening. My name is Jose Diaz, and I live here in New Britain. I've been living in New Britain for more than fifteen years. And I remember the first day when walking into New Britain High School as a sophomore. It's already tough enough to be the new kid and going into a freshman year, but yet alone sophomore. Yes, I experienced bullied, I experienced so many things at the high school. But I remember one of the things that kept me going every day was actually the faculty and putting the hope into those individuals who actually advocating for me, whether it was my parents as much as they could, but as you've probably heard from other individuals, it's hard being a New Britain grand, and parents not thinking that they have a voice, which is why I'm here today, not speaking so much about me and my past, but for other students who are currently going there right now. For those parents who wanted to be here so bad and express themselves, all these things that their kids are going through. But whether it's fear, lack of knowledge, or just thinking that they don't have a voice, they're not here today. A couple were able to come, but we were so many other more, meeting over the weeks, talking about our stories, talking about their kids, talking about their future, whether they wanted to move as well or not, and then just being trapped. And they were thinking, if this is our life, and our life is difficult enough, why do our kids have to go through that as well? Shouldn't they just focus on education? And so that's, once again, why I'm here today, just sharing that this is going on. And just because you don't hear these stories, it doesn't mean that it's not happening. It doesn't mean that it's not important, and not just from the parents, but the kids. Imagine how the kids are gonna be talking about New Britain. I'm pretty sure you don't want them growing up and thinking, "I will never go back to that city." I am proud to be living here in New Britain, and I hope that others will also grow up the same way. I hope that you all consider all our stories and that you are open-minded, but not only that, that you work hard enough, even if you don't hear any of us. If you don't ever see us anymore, it doesn't matter, because we will be out there thinking, "Who were making the decisions? Who were those individuals?" So please, I urge you, consider it, make it a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members that wish to address the board? Any other members of the public that wish to address the board? Any other members of the public that wish to address the board? Seeing none, we can move on to reports. Start in with item 2A, CAPE 2023 Communications Award.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce our representative here from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, Philip Rigor. Did I say that?
That's correct.
Close to properly?
Yep.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Awesome, thank you for having me. Good evening, Superintendent Anthony Gasser, members of New Britain Board of Education. As it was referenced, my name is Philip Rigor, I'm the chairman of Harvard Board of Ed. But tonight, I'm here on behalf of CAPE to recognize the efforts of New Britain schools and to present you with these awards. In order to receive the Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications, entries must meet all of the following criteria. First, in a general criteria which includes clarity of message, image, and consistency. Second, the specific guidelines, reliability, editing, graphics, type of format, presentation, design, and value of expenditure. I'm very happy to present New Britain Public Schools with the award for excellence in educational communication for social media, standout staff member and standout student series, as well as newsletter, District Dispatch. CAPE has been honoring school districts with award of excellence for educational communications since 1975. In 2016, the, the award was renamed in honor of longtime CAPE staff member Bonnie B. Carney in recognition of her forty-seven years of dedication to education and focus on communication. With this award, CAPE's goal is to identify and honor the hard-working people in school districts for their continued efforts to communicate effectively. With that being said, congratulations.
Thank you. So, with that, I'd like to bring our communications officer to the podium, and Ryan, Ms. Langer. Ms. Ryan Langer, would you like to recognize by name your team, and then we'll pause for a photo?
Thank you so much. I'd like to thank the boards for this, the board and superintendents for the support in the communications office over the past couple of years. I have a number of members of our team here tonight to accept this award. Mr. Powell Figot, Communication Assistant. Ms. Asha Jahaf, Communication Assistant at the high school. Ms. Asha Nusier, Communication Assistant. Ms. Ariana Mohammed, Communications Student Worker.
Get in there, girl.
Usually it's Ryan or Powell taking the pictures, but we have an equally good photographer. This is your expertise, that. Where would you like us to stand, Ryan?
Oh, I think right here.
Stand right here, I'm tall.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's like this way. And take a few. There's always blinkers. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rigor.
Okay, thank you. We can move on to item 2B, Superintendent's Report, next.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I'm gonna, very short, speaking by me, but as we did last time, it's gonna be my pleasure to bring forward a couple of our principals to talk about the successes at their schools. I'm gonna ask Ms. Gina Cavall to come forward while I talk fairly briefly about the other parts of my report. So, as has been typical, you have our award-winning District Dispatch in front of you. So nice to have that recognition publicly tonight. And as always, you can see some really great articles about the really great things. New Britain High School brings back the blood drive for the first time in eight years. Creativity in our literacy and elementary curriculum, and the One School, One Book Initiative that happened at Slate Middle School, along with the typical, as is now typical, the superintendent recognitions. And, please be patient when you see this month's pep talk podcast. It was my first attempt to do it in Spanish. So please don't be overly.
You used to be a Spanish teacher.
I know, but I'm rusty, I'm rusty, I'm, I'm working on it, I'm working on it. So as we did at our last meeting for part of the superintendent's report, you know, we've, we've talked about district growth plans and school growth plans. And just this weekend, thank you again for those of you who were able to attend, the board is dedicating time, your volunteer time, to a strategic plan. And, and these plans can sound very ethereal and very vague sometimes. And these plans can sound very ethereal and very vague sometimes, so I'm making an effort as your superintendent to bring those right down to earth for you. Last time, we heard from two principals, and this time, we're going to hear from two principals as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gina Cavalo from Lincoln School.
Good evening, Dr. Gassper and the Board of Ed, and thank you for allowing me to share about Lincoln and our success. So do I just ask you to hit it? Okay. All right. So at Lincoln School, we live on something we call Three Big Rocks. And our Three Big Rocks are where we make all our decisions, and these are our standards that we live on. So our, they are high expectations and urgency, building instructional capacity, and collaboration for community building. So everything we do, these are the, these are our standards. These are where we live. So when I started, when I started at Lincoln five years ago, we started, our goal was that we wanted to become a restorative and trauma-informed school. That is what I, that was my vision. That is what I wanted to bring when I came to Lincoln School as a first-year principal. This was my five-year plan. This is where I wanted to go. And when I started in New Britain, that was the year 2019, 2020. So if you think about what happened that year, let's just start there. So in year one, these are the things that Mr. Ruiz and I worked on. And then, once I show you our five-year strategic plan, I'm going to share with you the data to prove our work and where we are now. So in year one, the five, the things that we really worked on in our building was we wanted all of our students to identify caring adults, so that every student can say who their caring adult was in the building. We worked on respect agreements. Instead of rules like no talking, no running in the hall, students and teachers came up with respect agreements where they were a mutual understanding of what the kids were to do and what the teachers were to do. We started circles. Instead of like a morning meeting, we did circles. We circled up as a staff. We circled up as students. Because of a staff of a hundred and twenty-five-ish, it embarrassed me that some of my staff members didn't even know each other. So we started circling up as a staff so that we can get to learn about each other. We also established a school climate team. So that team helped drive the strategic plan. We rebranded Lincoln, naming our lion Leo. We also came up with some colors. We also started to celebrate what Lincoln was, and we came up with our acronym of Lincoln Roars, which is our standards. And the Lincoln Roar stands for Respect, Ownership, Attitude, Responsibility, and Safety. And those posters are all over our building, and those are expectations of how students are to behave. So if you clicked on Roars, you can click on that Roars.
I don't know if the clicking is going to work.
It might not click, but you can see in the hallway, this is how kids would behave. In the gymnasium, this is how kids would behave, in the cafeteria. So those are the expectations of everything, of what we expect the students to do. So that was very important, that we took control of what the building would look like and what we expected in each of the letters. So that is the Lincoln Way. And you'll hear in our building, the kids will talk about the Lincoln Way. Staff will talk about the Lincoln Way. Are you showing the Lincoln Way? So that was very important to bring our climate into control. So this was our first year, this is what we were doing. And this was our main focus. And we were, we were hitting the ground running, things were going great, and then March hit, and then COVID hits. And we were successful during COVID because we had such tight systems in place, and we continued with our morning circles. We would have the kids come in and check in with us. We still did circles in the morning. We did circles at eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. And any kids that wanted to come in and see us doing circles, they were able to meet with us. So we kept those relationships going with our families. And as a staff, we did a circle at three o'clock to check in with each other, because we knew the importance of staying together as a cohesive group. And I felt that that was so important to stay as a team. So our first year, even though with COVID hitting us, we were very successful. So then we went on to year two. And in year two, we continued with, and I did this with no money. This was all free. I had zero dollars. I asked for zero dollars. So year two, and I wanted, and not in like that. So year two, we continued with the caring adults, and we also worked with some de-escalations. The teachers all established a de-escalation space, and we started working with strategies. Here, I got some money through a grant, and we started working with Joe Brummer, and we started working with some training with him, because we start, and we also started a primary play project with the mental health grant. And the primary play project is an intervention for our students who have maybe some social anxiety, some schooling, some school anxiety, where we have a playroom where students go in and it's self-directed play. They work with a trained school associate, and they can play, and we learn a lot about the child. And then we also started some parent focus groups, and we started training them in some restorative practices and some trauma-informed work. So that was year two. So we're continuing building the momentum. Year three, we started some peer mediation. We did a whole book study with this book. We did some re-entry circles. We started the restorative questions, the art of request, and then we started going into our brain research and science. And then we, continuing our work, year four, we worked on a behavior matrix. I'm not going to hit that, and that was just like some of the behavior stuff. We started buddy teacher for students, so when students needed support, they would go to a classroom. Another important thing we did was a tap-out for teachers, because we realized sometimes a teacher needed a break, so they would tap out, and another teacher would come in and take over that class, just like a student, now he gets a break. Sometimes our adults need breaks too. And that was very effective. We also started some academic circles. And then collaborative and proactive solutions is now our students are now the ones that help deliver the consequences when our students are breaking our standards. I don't call them punishments, it's consequences because they're logical. So now our students are taking more of that leadership role. So now, this is this year, year five, we started the Leaders Rising Group. And our Leaders Rising Group is our elementary level, and they are partnered up with the Ed Rising Group at the high school. I'm working with Eileen Marquez, and we, our kids are being mentored by the high school group. And we've been to the high school, and the high school students have been to our school. So we, these are our future leaders, and our goal is that this elementary group will eventually be the Ed Rising Group at the high school. We also have our student-led restorative circles. I have an advisory group of students that tell me I'm doing a bad job, where I need to improve, where the school needs to improve. They give me the best feedback. We're revising our RTI or in our MTS process, and then we created some more professional norms where we're really focused on our accountability and holding each other accountable, where we can have those crucial conversations, where now my staff is holding each other accountable, and I'm not holding them as accountable. They're doing more of the work. So this is some of our tiered interventions we have in our building. The green is what everybody receives. The yellow is what some of our students receive, and the red is the most severe for our students that are having the most difficulty. The biggest thing we're doing is the mentoring through the Leaders Rising and the Primary Play Project, and that is going very well with our students who need that more support. And I'm not going to read that, go through that. Okay, so DESSA is our, now, how do we measure we're successful? And we measure our, we use the DESSA tool. The DESSA tool is a quick screener. All our students get tested through the DESSA, and it's based on social emotional wellness. So we go through this screener, and our kids are tested three times a year, in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And those students that don't score or score in the needs area, we give them an intervention. So I'm going to share with you some of our data from this year. This was our pre and our post. So if you can see the growth from this year on our DESSA, so you can see the green went up significantly. We went from, we went, so we have nobody left in the needs improvement this year. So that's significant. So where did our kids move? This is where they moved. So the needs kids, they moved into the strength, the typical. And then the typical kids, where they moved into the, to the strength, the typical, and the needs for instruction. So I broke it up where they moved into which of those categories. And then the next slide is where our strength kids, and some of the kids did go down, but that's typical, that not all the kids in the strength will stay in the strength. A couple of them did go down. But we did have some substitutes in the beginning of the year, and then the real teachers came back, so they might have scored them a little differently, but that's typical. And then this is by grade level, and that just shows you the growth we had on the DESSA by grade level. And then the next slide, it breaks it down by the competencies, and those are what the kids are measured on. And then if you go to our next slide, this is our referrals by month. So this just shows you, again, how successful our data is. As a school, if you go to the next slide, we only have a hundred and sixty-six referrals for the year, for a school of six hundred and twenty-two kids. And if you, when I first took over the school in 2018 and 2019, I looked at the data, we decreased the referrals in five years by sixty-two percent. We decreased the suspensions in five years by seventy-eight percent through this restorative and this trauma-informed work. If you go to the next slide, forty-two percent of the referrals are five kids. And eleven percent of my kids have a referral. Only fifty-two kids have a referral in the building of six hundred and twenty kids. So that is the work of Lincoln, and our school is calm and it's been, it's ready to learn. We do a lot of instruction. We've had a very good implementation of the ARC this year with the new reading curriculum. My teachers are teaching, and it's been very successful because we have set up such a good climate and culture. And what, before we took over, before the building, we have a very good retention of our teachers wanting to stay at Lincoln School. My teachers don't want to leave our school because of the way it is going at Lincoln. And that's my.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalo. Is there a question or two from the board for Ms. Cavalo before we move on to Mr. Soto?
No, are we cloning her?
So this is, that's a great question. So when you've heard me say this idea of islands of excellence, this is what I mean, is it's classroom to classroom, but it's also school to school. So when you and I last met, Ms. Cavalo, it was just a week or two after the last Principals' Council meeting at which you presented this data, and you told me what about your fellow principals? You had gotten some.
Some principals did call me and ask me for some feedback and some support, and I shared with them. This was the work I brought with me from my last district, so I just, this is what I wanted to bring with me to New Britain, and this is, it worked. It worked in my last school, and I knew this is what I wanted to bring with me to New Britain, and I believe in it.
So this is how we're making ourselves better, little by little. The clone is a great idea, but it's actually not exactly what we want to do, because my perception is part of the strength here is Lincoln built this for themselves. So they should be looking and learning, but then designing, how would that work at their school?
And like I said, I did this with very little to know.
Yeah, so I can see, some of this probably, I can see working great maybe at Smith or Jefferson, but I can't see someone that's working at a middle school or high school. But I can see components being adapted, and the principals there taking pieces of it, adapting it their own. So yeah, I can see working that, those schools they work on themselves.
Can I just capitalize on, so one thing that you did say was that you can't see it, and I'm asking you to not put that emphasis in part of your statement for right now, because I too was one of those that was like, I don't know how you're going to change my little CJ and get him to talk and actually get him to share with you, and so that way you guys can learn how to help invest, and that's exactly what happened. CJ went to Slate Middle School, having tools in his toolbox to be able to actually articulate things that I could never see possible before. And that, she really took the time.
This is a great program, saying that, I think it can be adapted, it would need to be adapted for the other, the other grade levels.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm challenging the other grade levels to adapt it for their own schools.
Yeah, the key part is that the staff had a lot of voice in the process.
Yes. And the students, really, it was just so student-focused. And if you have not seen a child in full-blown emotional, just a moment where they need to pause, we bore witness to it, and I really was able to stand out there. It happened right in front of me in the middle of the street. He ran out of sales tree. And the staff was able to get him back calm, back into school, and it was those tools that really, thank you for bringing that to us, to our attention even then, but I don't see.
And I have great staff, and I port the great leaders. Ali Galen now is working on this with me, and Orlando was very instrumental in doing this with me.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalo. Mr. Kane. Sorry, we have one more question. Sorry. Mr. Kane.
Sorry, if we slot the clone you.
We have one more presentation as part of the superintendent's report as well.
I just want to ask you real quick, is there a, interested in the DESSA SCL screener? Is there a cost to that, or is that something that's offered for free?
The district, I think, does pay for the DESSA screener.
It's available to every, every school?
Some schools weren't able to, some. It's free.
It's provided by the state of Connecticut.
Some schools were able to pilot it. I was one of the schools that chose to use it.
And we're looking at rolling it out more widely.
Fascinating.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Yeah, I just want to recognize Gina, because I've known her since, she was in elementary school, working with us in Starmont School, a volunteer, she wasn't really working. But she had all this enthusiasm for being a teacher from a little girl. So, and her father was a great teacher too.
Father was a great principal, who was mentioning me as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalo. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Dario Soto, principal of DeLoreto Magnet School, to tell us about some of the successes we're seeing now.
Buenas noches, todo mundo. Soy Dario Soto, soy director de DeLoreto. Hi, my name is Dario Soto. I'm the principal of DeLoreto. Por tiempo voy a hacer esta presentación en inglés, pero si cualquier persona tiene pregunta, por favor, me puede contactar, y la formación está en el código en la esquina de la pantalla. For time's sake, I'll make this presentation in English, but if anybody wants to reach out to me, please make sure you contact me right in the corner. There's a QR code that's going to let you get my quick, quick presentation, and we can always have a conversation. So first and foremost, I'm going to say thank you to God and my family for the blessing that's helped mold me, and thank you to the board for giving me this opportunity. And mainly, again, I want to really give a big thanks to my sixth-grade team that sat of their own time for sixty minutes, had a conversation with me. No paying for that prep, so they did it all because they wanted to share some of their success. Today's presentation has four key elements that I'll be talking about. And this, again, the iReady data, kind of some of the factors, some of the iReady resources we use, and again, give a little space for any question, comments, or concerns that may be brought up by any of the board members. So to kind of get us started, what we want to look at is the data itself. So what we're going to look at here is what our data set in September and what is kind of, I'm saying currently. So this is just for one grade level, and this is just in math. So we're only looking at sixth-grade math. And I know the numbers are small, so I just want to point out some of the real big things that we want to look at here. So in September, we had zero students at or above, oh, sorry, above grade level. So that's that dark green area. So the fall is the second bar. Currently, we have three students that are above grade level in sixth grade. The bar next to it talks about what students are ready and learning sixth-grade material. We have four. Currently, we have six. So again, we have now gone from four students at above grade level to now nine. We doubled that. So let's look at how many students were close, but about a year behind. We had, at that, eleven. Currently, we have thirty-six. Why is that important? Because those students that came over, those twenty-five students were in the red. That means more than two years behind. That's, that's a big chunk, especially in middle school. Again, my area expertise is STEM education, I studied a lot, and I want to point out the bars at the bottom. The bars at the bottom tell you what makes up this assessment, what are we looking at? And as we know, one of the major components that you need for middle school math is algebra and algebra readiness. So if you look at that, that top bar out of those four will tell you what we're doing in that area. And that area, again, is algebraic thinking and reasoning. In the fall, we had zero students above grade level. We had one student that was on grade level. Currently, we have twenty-three. Currently, we have twenty-three percent of our students in sixth grade at or above grade level. Again, that, that's a major, major event for us because that, we know that they're going to be ready now to be able to achieve in later middle school and in high school. That is one of the cornerstones of what we build, our math academics in the middle school. So going a little bit beyond these numbers, so we'll, we'll have a, extend this conversation a little bit. What's the key factors that we did? Some of it was realizing the talent we already had. So when we set up our test, we wanted to make sure that the students were taking the test seriously and the staff knew it was serious. It wasn't just a time not to teach or it wasn't just a time not to learn. So we set a testing schedule that we were tight to and letting the students know that we're not wasting your time here. We're trying to get to know what you know and what you need to know. So we put that schedule out to all staff that was created. It took a couple of weeks by my testing team and they did a wonderful job. We also did have an incentive because learning is fun. And like I tell the students, these tests are an opportunity to brag without saying anything. So let's see what we could do. So we gave them, anybody that grew, they had a little movie time. And then we gave them a social. So we let our middle schoolers get together. We had DJ Timmy. So Timmy is again, our, our community liaison. He was free of cost and he's very popular. So, so Timmy came. Again, it was a time where the kids got to talk to each other and kind of hang out. Again, it's very important to give them that, that time. So they did do that. The other thing we talked about is our teachers talked about the importance of the test with the students and where their goals are. So when you take the iReady assessment, it'll tell you your deficit areas and what are your goals, where you should be next time you take the, the test, and what are your stretch goals? If you just push yourself a little bit more, where you should get to. So our teachers discussed that. They met with the students, talked about where we should be, why we should be there, and what it'll take to get there. So we look at this data. So okay, so what are some of the resources we have? So the district kindly purchased iReady. So iReady is an online platform where students can build on the knowledge that they already have and kind of cut some of the gaps.
Mr. Soto, if I might just explain, iReady is both an assessment and a learning platform.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, no, it's all good. So what our teachers do, our teachers then gave the students iReady time every day, about twenty minutes. But that's typical. A lot of districts, a lot of places do that. What's different with what our sixth-grade teachers did is we're not looking at time on task. If you look at that chart up there, the part where I made the little circles, the diagnostic tool and iReady itself says if students are on half hour to an hour, they'll make the gains that they have been targeting. That's what the research says nationally. We're doing well in there. But our teacher said, that's not our goal. Our goal is not that you're sitting in front of the computer clicking, going through it. It's about lessons passed. So for the students to be able to earn any privileges or go on to something else, the teachers in sixth grade are looking at how many lessons you pass. And they needed to pass two lessons in math a week to be able to move on or if they wanted to study something different, something of choice on Friday. So that was very important because if you look at that, that other area that I circled, they were passing eighty-six percent of the lessons that they were taking. So it wasn't, they were sitting in front of the computer, they were kind of just clicking through it. They really had to show their growth. And when they didn't learn or they, they were struggling, then teachers went back and were talking about it. It was a team effort. So if I go to the, to the next slide, when we talk about, all right, we got part of the story, right, with the numbers, let's talk about that next part. And the next part was what, what the teachers were doing. So we focus on IM. IM is our math curriculum. We stayed very close to what we were being asked to teach and taught it with fidelity. I know it's tempting, very tempting to say, hey, they don't know this, let's, let's bring it down a little bit. But we all know, once we bring it down, it's heavily get back up. So we want to stay at that level and scaffold, right? So the teachers did that. They used on-grade level materials. So we stayed away from the temptation of the teacher-paid teachers and all the other stuff out there that may not be verified, right? And we stayed close to what we know works, what's been research-based. Also too, we use videos to reinforce. IM also has videos and there's other pieces. So my teachers, again, Ms. Howie, every time she taught a lesson, she said, hey, when you're going home, you can look this up, look at Google Classroom. She made that available so that learning could extend outside the classroom. We also, as you know, all New Britain teachers teach one extra hour of tutoring a week. That was student-driven and student-focused in math. So the students could come in and talk about things that they were struggling in the lesson, but they can also say, you know what, I'm ready for this next one, let's, let's do it. Right? And Ms. Howie and the team were ready to do that as well. So giving students choice on their own learning was a big part of what we're doing as a team. So again, I know that was super, super quick because I know I'm a guy.
You don't look like you're sweating to me.
I think it's just a lice. But, but again, I, I never like to leave without having people ask questions because we don't run, we don't hide. So please, if there's any questions, comments, or concern, this is y'all's time.
Questions?
I know there isn't like any one thing you can point to, but when you reflect on your experience and you think of kind of moving forward with a little bit of time that we have remaining in the year, what do you see for your, for your sixth grade? What do you see them doing when you're?
I, I see them being able to have good wait time. That's something where it is hard and Ms. Howie does it well. So she'll, she'll ask questions in a kind of, kind of way. Why I say wait time, because we need to think and we can't always give students the out, right? Like right now, I, I waited and I'm saying, any questions that want to come, I'm prepared. I'm ready to talk about what my staff would do. I want them to know, hey, there's going to be wait time. I need to be prepared to answer about math. And I think she does that well. She gives them time where it's not going to be an out. If I just stay quiet and avoid eye contact, she's not going to call on me, right? So I think she, she's, she's doing that well, especially for later in middle school. We know our data is not as good in seventh and eighth grade. And we're really trying to target that to make sure that they're ready for middle school, for high school.
Is your plan, you did so well enough sixth grade, is your plan now to continue with seventh grade as well, sixth grade next year?
Yeah, so our plan is to kind of expand what we're doing, the Island of Excellence, right? So we did that with our Dos Enono Program. That was my Island of Excellence and we extended it with our, if you review our data going into second grade, sorry, first grade and second grade. We're going to try to do the same thing, but it takes tweaking and it takes a little more time. So what we did to kind of ensure that we can push that further in the middle school, we are going to lean on modern classroom. It's an initiative that y'all are probably familiar with. If not, it has an online component and Ms. Howie's heavily invested in it. So that's how we're going to try to push it up to the seventh and eighth grade. But it, it'll take some time to make sure all the pieces are there. Just want to be clear.
Okay. I appreciate that.
I just want to send a shout-out to Ms. Howie. I had the pleasure of being at Deloito for a time and I saw her in fourth grade and then when I, at the end of that year, I knew she had told us she wanted to go to sixth grade. And seeing her in fourth grade, I saw, if you haven't seen Ms. Howie teach, y'all should go, it's worth going, but I saw her take a neurodiverse child and, and that neurodiverse child ran a math lesson in her class. Tell her, tell her Salas Cabal, she remembers this clearly. Because I, and I'm, for those that know me, I'm a secondary person, not a primary person. But to watch what she did with that classroom over the course of a year, and I said, yeah, man, this, this is it right here, right? And then she told us at the end of the year that she wanted to go to sixth grade. I have two children, while I will say, I was blessed to have to go to Deloito. Almost, my, my little one did all of it, but my older one started in fourth grade. Whose teacher was here for, his, her, her, for a while, but, she was the good one though. She was the good one. But all that to say that, yeah, I mean, Delo at the time had struggled with some, some, just math turnover in seventh and eighth grade, so it was a spot that it was tough, right?
It's everything but me.
But yeah, Ms. Howie's, yeah, she's something special, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Soto. And that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. Let's start with policy.
Okay, so we met, there are a couple items on tonight's agenda for the board to discuss and potentially, potentially take action on. We also talked about the CAPE audit results and Dr. Gasper put together, and his staff put together a nice binder to organize all of that for us. And so the twenty-five mandated policies, we decided we are going to start chipping away those and our next meeting will address the first three in our binder for the mandated policies to review. If anything else comes up in the meantime, we will obviously address it, but that's where we're going to start our work.
Right, curriculum.
Curriculum was easy. It's, we work for Leona Clerkin, so Leona Clerkin comes and now, Leona came in with her music staff and presented, you know, the new curriculum that's, that they're going to be, it's sort of the part B of the art one. Now it's the music. So it's a, you know, program, looks like it's going to have some good outcomes for kids.
How about personnel?
Yes, we had a very short meeting, just a couple items and they're on the consent agenda tonight.
All right, and finance facilities?
We had the lengthy meeting. I think we had like thirty items on our agenda. Mostly dealing with renewal contracts for IT. We had quite a bit of discussions on the Buc- Free Homes project. We had to see a nice 3D rendering of what the grounds are going to be, the new layout of the building, the new grounds, changing of the parking lot structure, the drop-offs, see how, the residents should be happy the way the use of Niro is going to be and everything. We also did a lot of work in summer school program too, renewed some contracts for that. We also had discussion of the busca, some busi, busi issues as well. So most of the items are on, almost every item that we discussed is on the consent agenda this morning.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you. Let's move on to board reports. Ms.?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm ready.
You're ready?
I am so ready for you. Okay, so in honor of National Teacher Appreciation Week, I'm trying to turn this into appreciation in New Britain every single day, but here we go. So I put something together so that way we'd be able to, as a board, be able to recognize our amazing staff in our district. Here's what I wrote. Every day in the city of New Britain, within the Consolidated School District of New Britain, you will find our teachers arriving early to set up for instruction, spending long hours teaching our children and diligently collaborating and preparing for the next lesson plans. During the first week of every month of May, and especially on May seventh, we celebrate our nation's teachers and childhood educators. The Consolidated School District of New Britain proudly acknowledges each of our five hundred eighty-five certified staff, certified teachers rather, who impact the lives of over nine thousand of our students. Our teachers go beyond the classroom, connecting with students in various ways, including different languages, extracurricular activities such as coaching after school, instruction through music, and showcasing their own artistic creativity in the community. Today, the portrait of the graduate from our Consolidated School District means our teachers are adapting to diverse learning needs, fostering individuality in each child and working to strengthen partnerships within our community. While National Teacher Appreciation Day is on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, as a part of National Appreciation Week, May sixth through tenth, twenty twenty-four, we want to thank all of our teachers every day. And in the words of Joyce Meyer, teachers can change lives with just the right mix of chalk and challenge. So I thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sinhana. Any other board reports? Mr. Kane?
This past weekend, I had the pleasure of serving as the judge at the Connecticut History Day competition this Saturday over at CCSU. And there was one entrant, a finalist for the website. His entrance was on the Polish martyrs. He had a Polish name and we weren't allowed to ask where he's from. And I asked him to introduce himself and I thought, sure, he's the same where he was. He mentioned his school, it was a Krec school. So afterwards, I asked the head of the program, was there any New Britain entrants? Because I knew one of the judges was from New Britain High. Oh, no, we don't have any New Britain people. So disappointed because House used to be a powerhouse for the program, but House closed. So we're disappointed that New Britain did not have anybody in the program. So I'd like to see, I'm giving a challenge there, I'd like to see us have somebody in the future try this trophy because New Britain has got such talented kids and we've got such talented history, teachers in the district. I would love to see next year to have some, especially being in the, the competition is held right in our backyard at CCSU. We have a partnership with CCSU to have a comp, entrance in the competition next year. So mission is a challenge next year to have some entrants in the History Day competition.
Thank you. Any other board reports? All right, so none. Moving on to student representative report. Ms. Mohammed, is there time for you?
It is, sorry. Is there time for me? And like all students, but thank you, Tina, for bringing up Teacher Appreciation Week. Just say thank you to you all and all the wonderful teachers and educators in New Britain. Just thanking you guys for all that you do. So right now, there's a lot happening at New Britain High. This past, I believe it was Thursday, this past week, our academy's actually got to celebrate seniors getting their cords and juniors. So we celebrated all our academies, so the Health Academy, Public Service, Business and Finance, and Met. Yes, I always forgot that. But seniors everywhere with their cords and certificates and it was really nice just to see those students honored. I myself also got cards, so that was really great. I think almost every week, there's a new ceremony, just awarding seniors for all their hard work. There's the top ten percent, there's National Art Society and just a lot more. So if you guys ever want to go and stop by and see all the hard work, that'd be great. This Wednesday, we have our senior boys volleyball. It's their senior night, so just go out and support them. And this Friday, we have back on stage with our music department. So a lot of great things happening at New Britain High School. May is a very busy month, so I expect the same for you guys, so.
Thank you. Congratulations on everything. All right, so we can move on to item three, executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session with possible public action to ratify contracts between the New Britain Board of Education and Local eleven eighty-six, New Britain Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council for AFL-CIO from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This is with Ms. Mary Ellen Manning, Attorney Ritter, and Dr. Gasper.
So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to come out of executive session? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so can I have a motion?
Boo. It's a big deal. It's better if you read the whole thing.
Motion to ratify the contract between the New Britain Board of Education and Local eleven eighty-six, the New Britain Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council for AFL-CIO from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Absentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to return to executive session with possible public action to follow for the purposes of discussing candidates for the Slade Middle School Principalship with Dr. Sanders, Ms. Glasquez, Mr. Richardson, and Dr. Gasper?
Motion.
Second.
And then Carrie Lynn Major, when we call her in. All those in favor? Have a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion to, a motion to appoint Ms. Carrie Lynn Major to the Principalship at Slade Middle School?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much to the board, Dr. Gasper, district leadership, my colleagues. Like I said in there, I've been in New Britain for eighteen years. It's been an awesome journey. I've built just great relationships, loving this district and the city. And I'm just really excited and blessed and grateful to have the opportunity to-
really excited and blessed and grateful to have the opportunity to lead a school here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna take some photos. Sorry.
You can't sit down.
Okay, sorry.
A token of.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Selena, do you have any memory?
Better than that.
He's getting his phone now.
Yeah? It's in the car, but it's.
Don't worry, it's no different.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
All right, moving on to new business. Item A, have a motion to approve minutes from the regular board meeting on April 1st, so.
Second.
Discussion. Feeling good? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Item B, enrollment report. As the board can see, we continue to trend slightly up, just a little more than two percent over this point last year. That's been our trend for this whole school year. Any discussion? We gotta vote on this, right?
No. We typically don't. That's just informational for the board.
All right, moving on to item C, report for personnel transactions and extracurricular appointments. Review for that. And this is a vote. Have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
This makes me surprised, because I saw retirements, and I know some of them are Dr. Gasper and I age, and they're retiring.
Tempting.
Yeah, it makes us feel, we're not old enough to retire yet.
Nancy over at Spotty was one. She's been in the district a long time. I just haven't acknowledged. She's, she's great. Yeah, she's earned her time.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. Moving on to board approval items. Item D, have a motion to approve board policy, P 6115.3 flag. Move.
Second.
Discussion. This is a.
Why are you looking at me?
I'll just, I'll, I'll just, I'll start by saying, it's, this was a very long process, and I've, um, am happy that we've gotten it to this point. And I thank everyone on the policy committee through multiple years who helped get to what we have tonight. And with Mr. Kane?
Um, yes, um, yeah, I'm appreciative for all the work that's been put into this. It can come a long way. That being said, my concern still remains the time period, as little as one day to a maximum period of twenty days. I think there is a lot of room for misinterpretation. If one student's flag is up for five, another student's is up for seventeen, another student's is up for one. I think it should be standardized, regardless of what the time period is, out of fairness and equity to everybody. That's just, that's my opinion on that time period.
I agree with that too, because all you're picturing is who's making determination. Is it a principal? Is it administrator? Is it a, who's making that determination? Superintendent, that, how long should something guys be? One, you have one set time, admit that's it.
And this is what the city does as well.
The requesters putting in the request for the amount of time that they'd like to, correct?
Uh, that is the intent.
But then, then the person approving the request, shorten it. That's what I'm afraid of. Somebody could say, oh, I don't think it's, I think, somebody like, I'm gonna put it for twenty days, and have it done the reason for twenty days. But then somebody might say, well, I think that's controversial. I'm gonna only give you four, five. That's what I'm afraid of.
But you got, I mean, the language is there. The superintendent may reduce requested time period, you know what I mean, to as little as five school days. I mean, that's why we have Dr. Gasper. I mean, I don't, I don't see why, and I understand because you say, you know, why, why, some of the commentary has been, that's tough to place it on him. I mean, you hire competent people, you hire people who know people, you hire people who have relationships with admins, for that purpose. And I, and I understand, but sometimes we have to be careful when we say, you know, fairness and equity, right? And sometimes we're confusing with fairness and fairness and equality, right? It's not gonna be perfect. There's always gonna be a lot of constituents. I have 100% faith that Dr. Gasper's not gonna let any kind of flag that we wouldn't accept here as, as fly in front of any of our schools. You've got the out there. If there's any concerns that we have, or as we look at some of these conflicts moving forward, which is what we said last time, then we convene, and we have a meeting, and we'll say, okay, look, right? I don't see any problem with the language that we have forward, moving this forward. Let's try it for a year, and we can always adjust. It's not written in concrete, right? It's something we could always come back and, you know, circle back with policy. That's why we have a standing policy committee, right? I mean, I'm happy with the language as it is, and I support the language as it is.
No, I'm just, excuse, what about the accusation that this person got five days, I got twenty, I got ten, the accusations of favoritism or whatever.
But that accusation could also work in reverse.
If I may, the, um, as superintendent, I would be granting the length of the request up to twenty days. So if somebody requested five days, I would grant that. If somebody requested twenty days, I would grant that, and I suggested the language that allows me to curtail that, so one group can't monopolize the flagpole for a whole month. So, to the question of how do we know who gets five or ten, I'm not picking that. That's gonna be the protester. And, and the only time I'll change the protester's duration would be when I have competing requests for the same flagpole on the same days, down to nothing less. If you requested twenty, the, the policy gives me the right to shorten that to five, so that I can accommodate other requests for the same flagpole on the same days.
Who's gonna be putting the flag up and down anyway?
There would be any combination of the custodial staff probably.
So it's our staff.
Under the direction.
It's our staff at the high school. It's, it's very nice that it's the JROTC students, once they're properly trained on how to do so.
No matter what you do, there's always gonna be people complaining about something. So I think that we have a policy, and if it doesn't work, believe me, they'll be knocking on their door, standing right there telling us about it, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't, don't, don't pour the gray hair things on that.
I'll be keeping an eye on it. I'll be keeping an eye on it.
You're young still.
Forward questions to Tony.
No, I, hey, I live right by there, so I have no problem driving by and saying.
Time to take it down.
No, I, I did it with a couple others this summer, like, why is that flag still up? Why is that, you know, why is this flag still up? And, you know, I would drive by the pole, like, why is that flag, the American flag's not up, and this flag's still up there?
So you're gonna be complaining?
I was, I did complain.
Any more discussion?
I did, I did.
The only thing I want, I want to say is, like, if it, when, if it does go through, I would like to see, like, if there are any issues, somebody that will compile that documentation, and just, if we have to revisit it, that'd be good information to have, to see what were the issues, you know, like, you know, who was complaining, why they were complaining, but, yeah.
What, put Tony, what, tell me, see Tony. Email the desk.
Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Edwards, can you roll call vote? Thank you.
You're gonna work backwards, so I'll start with Ms. Tina Santana?
No.
Ms. Dolce Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. John Hina?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
She didn't hear you, sir.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Ms. Annie Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a K?
No.
Uh, Mr. Salvador Escobalas?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a C?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Barbara Marina?
Because it is something that is not cast in concrete and can be changed, I'd say yes.
And then Mr. Joseph Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion Carrie with eight to.
Finally. Thank you.
Didn't take two years.
Coming up on it.
Can we memorialize this or something?
But as I said before, though.
It's the longest running workout.
This is the democratic process. This board had thorough, well-informed, respectful conversations about a potentially controversial topic.
I think we need to apply this.
Okay, moving on to item E. Do you have a motion for the board policy review, 5131.911, Safe School Climate?
So who? Second.
Good discussion.
After hearing some discussion tonight, could we get some data about bullying instances as of our schools, without revealing names and stuff? Just kind of just general data on it.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we can, Ms. Velazquez and Ms., Mr. Richardson can work with Ms. Solek, who's our district-wide assistant coordinator for school climate, and we can certainly have her come before you with data. Yep.
Do, do we have a set way of dealing with these situations when they come up? Are each school doing whatever they do?
So there's a, a very prescribed process for bullying. And it's important to remember that bullying is now a legal term. What we called bullying as children, or what is called bullying in society, may or may not be the same as the legal term for bullying. So that, it's, it's really important, and I, I understand, and the, the family that spoke tonight, I am monitoring that situation with the staff.
I'm sure, yeah.
So when, when somebody says that bullying wasn't verified, that means it's according to the, the legal standard, which, which is, is specific, and this, and it's changing, and this policy is meant to adapt to the new legal changes. So, um, when something is called bullying, when we determine that a bullying investigation should happen, yes, that is very prescribed with very, very set roles according to the law.
And do we, uh, the students who seem to be affected by this, are they referred to the social workers or school psychologists, someone to help them to deal with whatever it is?
Yeah, so each school has a different level of that type of support, whether it be somebody like a dean, or perhaps a BSA, a school counselor, a school social worker, probably not so much a school psychologist. That's a different type of role, as you would know, engaged pretty much specifically with, with special education testing. But yes, I, I know that our school administrators do work hard. Again, I don't want to diminish the concerns of the family that we heard from here tonight. I know that the staff is working hard with that, that particular family on, on those incidents.
Just a clarifying question about the school psychologists. But do the school psychologists from time to time, you think, such as, say, risk assessments, doctor?
Absolutely, they can. Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Yep.
Um, maybe it's in the current policy, but I don't see mention here really of cyberbullying.
It is definitely in there.
It's in there. It's in there. I think it's the second one.
It's a required legal element.
Larry's coming up to see a poll here. I just, I have a question just about timeline or flow, I guess. Notification, because I read not only this, but this will discipline policy as well, because they are interflined. If you could have a bullying situation that results in an in-house, out-house suspension?
Potentially, yes. However, I will say something that we are training our administrators on this summer is a, is a refresher on how restrictive out-of-school suspension can be. And I want to say that's a law going back about ten years or so. Out-of-school suspension by the law is really supposed to be used minimally. So in-school suspension is much more likely to be used, and oftentimes in conjunction with some type of restorative practice. So that, that student might get their in-school or out-of-school suspension. We also expect that the student who was the actor make amends in some way, to try to prevent it from just repeating itself again in the future.
Because aren't you responsible if something happens to a child while they're on out-of-school suspension? Aren't you so responsible for that child?
So we're responsible for, for sending homework and, and, right, but it's not in the same way as you might be thinking of, like, expulsion.
Well, everything, if something happens, like, the child's put on out-of-school suspension, and they get injured, or because they weren't doing their work.
We are, we are not responsible in that way, no. So that's why there's a prescribed process. There's actually due process. They actually use the legal term where the student has to have an informal hearing. What that basically means is a meeting with the administrator. The child gets a chance to explain themselves. The parent has to be notified in writing that your child will be suspended for this many days. And once that communication is done, then the child is home. And responsibility would, for any type of safety incident, it sounds like you're asking, would be at home, not with the school.
So, so my question more is that work, that, that flow and notification to parents, and timing of all of that when that happens. I know under the discipline policy, it says they'll be promptly notified. There's no timeframe. And here, I read something about within forty-eight hours after investigation is completed, which I don't, how long is that investigation? In other words, the child has been, there's something about bullying that has occurred and has been identified, and, which may or may not result in the alleged bullying child to be suspended.
So what I'll say is, from the, the documents that I review, whether that be and/or discussions with assistant principals, when I see something come to me for expulsion, and I can see that timeline, our assistant principals, associate principals, and principals are doing that as quickly as possible. So if a student's going out on suspension, if they did something that warrants an out-of-school suspension, it's typically the day of the, of the investigation. Now, we have to remember that there's, there's, there's no one timeline. And you have to remember the work of an assistant principal or a principal is, they might learn about something at 3:00 PM after all the kids have gone home. And they're gonna, the kids are gonna arrive the next morning, and then they're gonna begin their investigation, because they need the kids there in person. Things come up in the middle of the day, at the beginning of the day.
Right.
So what I know is, if a student is going to be assigned either in-school or out-of-school suspension, our, our principals and assistant principals are doing it as quickly as possible, because quite frankly, they, they want to process that as quickly as possible, and, and get on with the rest of their workday, if that can be quite funny. Because don't forget, they're also evaluating teachers, going to PPT meetings, things like that.
I, I guess might, because if we're sending a child home, the child's home, and the parent is sitting there looking at Joey going, you're home, why are you even in school?
It wouldn't be without communication.
Yeah, they would, yeah. You generally speak, and the assistant principal would call home.
They're always notified.
In terms of like a, my, you know, my, I'm assuming they do the same here, is, is the letter in terms of the OSS is gonna follow up. That's gonna be put in the mail, right? But we certainly would call the parent that day, tell them this is what we did in the course of investigation, and this is.
Then Joey can't come back until.
And then, yeah, Joey, yeah. It's because of what we have in terms of facts and statements from other students or other staff. Joey, we're using Joey's again, but Joey, Joey is out for two days, or whatever, you know, whatever that is.
And I'm pretty sure it's saying in Harper's New Britain, that Joey can't return without Joey's parents coming to school for a meeting.
Oftentimes, well, sometimes.
It depends. It depends.
Depends on the event.
Depends on the event, depends on the offense, depends on how repetitive it's been for this one child, depends on if it was an in-school or out-of-school suspension. You know, I'm satisfied that our, our principals and assistant principals take this process seriously. The, the purpose of any form of discipline, whether restorative or other, is to change behavior, is to say, so, welcome back to school, here's how we can prevent this from happening again.
I just wasn't sure, and I didn't, and I get, I get, it could be a case-by-case situation, but I was, I wasn't sure where, if there was a decision tree, if there was some kind of process whereby, especially in notifying parents and keeping them involved, and I'm thinking of the people that spoke here this evening, and other.
Yep.
Comments I've gotten in the grocery store and every place else, that we've got the parents notified.
I will say, I'm satisfied that our administrators are making good faith efforts to notify people. They're calling cell phones, they're calling, you know, landlines, if people still have those.
If they still have those, right.
They're texting, you know. So when I see reports of such, sometimes I see multiple attempts to contact. And I know a lot of our principals and assistant principals are using their district-provided cell phones to contact parents well after hours.
Okay.
And so these things are happening as quickly as possible, but it wouldn't be wise to have a mandated timeline, because these things happen at all times of the day.
And I like the fact that it also says outside of school too, because a lot of times bullying might happen afterwards.
So this is, I will say, and. So, this is, I will say, and, and, uh, Mr. Escobales, as, as, as a current assistant principal at a very large high school that I know well, can vouch, that's possibly the most difficult thing for a school administrator too. Right? When I talk to my friends who are not educators about cyberbullying and I tell them that we are legally responsible, we are legally responsible for one child says something mean to another child on TikTok at nine forty-five P M. Can you imagine? But we are. That's what's, so by law, one child says something mean to another child at nine forty-five P M on TikTok, that's the school's responsibility.
It's waiting for you in the morning when you get in.
Ms. Pina?
I, I just wanna say it's not so much TikTok as it is Snapchat. Is the, the.
You know Snapchat, really?
Yes, that's, that's, that's the big one. And, um, I, I, I can't go any further because I'm sensitive to this topic, so I won't talk any further.
A lot of fights, and I can tell you, I mean, that's especially the conversation we had at school today. A lot of fights we had at school, ninety-nine percent of them I would say started with an incident that happened outside of school. And so when I saw that line in there, outside of school bullying, it still result in an in-school discipline, that won me over.
But again, we're not, that's not creative writing by us, that's by the law.
I know.
But it's also critical to understand the work of our school administrators. Imagine how tough that is.
That's hours, hours of it.
Imagine how tough that is, when something that happened way after hours, way outside of school, is your responsibility legally. I want our kids to have a, a safe, calm place to go to school. I question whether or not that's a, that's a reasonable legal obligation of our school administrators, not just here in the Britten, statewide. Um, you know, having done that work myself and now watching people do that work, as, as Mr. Escobales said, it can be hours and hours and hours, um, and sometimes it's quite serious and you can take steps. And other times it's a rabbit hole that you never find the bottom of. And other times, the kids have resulted for themselves by the time you, you get to it. And, and there's no way of knowing until an A P like Mr. Escobales spends a ton of time on it, doing our best to get at the facts.
Any other discussion? And this will be followed by administrative procedures?
As needed, yes, yep.
All right, are those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, motion passes? Moving on to item F, uh, approved contract between the C S D N B and Root Center for Advanced Recovery, C M H A, Klingberg Family Centers and Community Health Center to provide expanded mental health services to students just district-wide. Do you have a motion?
Summon.
Second.
Discussion.
Just one item, um, this is an expansion, we currently have these types of services in our district um, with C M H A, Klingberg, Wheeler. The, we conducted a process, thank you to, to Mr. Spalding, Ms. Swaby and also Mr. Miramont, formed a team with me, invited people in. This is no financial impact on the district, this is very similar to the way in which these services are provided elsewhere. Um, doing what we can to provide more mental health services. It's important to know that the services are billed, as they currently are. Um, those services can be billed to Husky, to Medicaid or private insurance. But this is a way of expanding these services that are already in place to, to more students.
I just have a question, I know this is an expansion of what's currently in place, um, but because they're being billed to like private insurance, um, I understand that some students have like appointments, but if someone is in crisis, they might not necessarily be able to be seen. Um, will this help with that?
It has, so there, there have been, I, I will say to, to date, our, our partners in this realm have been very responsive. And, and they each say that, um, you know, the ability to pay will never be an impediment. They're, they have a duty to try to pursue payment, but they've all made a commitment that the ability to pay won't. I'd also say that for kids in crisis, we, we still do also have our school-based staff, our social workers, school counselors, et cetera, who can help. So, but to your point, it, it's not specifically set up for crisis, but they are there.
They won't turn them away.
This is what each of these contractors have told us. Again, I think to Ms. Reyes's point, this is not a replacement for in-school social workers. And as perhaps you've seen, uh, at the, uh, budget hearing last week with common counsel, I received that question. I'm not proposing reducing any of our, any of our social workers, of course, that is a need. But bringing on our own employees would be a budget impact that this does not represent.
Just some curiosity, I know that the arrangements themselves are already in place.
In some cases. So for example, Root Center would be a new partner.
Right, no, 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 but I'm saying the process is still the same, where like at the beginning of the school year, you, you know, provide your, and I do this for all, for, all four of my in-district kids, where I have to provide their medical insurance information.
Yes.
And it becomes customary and that's just pretty much it. Um, but I'm just curious, let's just say, uh, pull roots out of it or even just go by data, how much of an income stream is that for us, or are we making anything?
The board does not receive any, any funds for this, this is direct, the services are direct billed.
Direct billed to the insurance.
Correct.
We're not acting like a fiduciary, we're not doing anything.
No, we, I, I guess you could say that we, we are providing in-kind services by providing a location. That's the only cost to the board, um, but we are not receiving any funds directly.
And then the, the last question I have, and I'm sorry, it's taking too long, was, um, the Hartford dispensary. It still does business as, that's the B B A, Hartford Root Center for Advanced Recovery, they're not gonna be dispensing anything.
They will not be dispensing, no, that, that is their former, their former, um, business name that they, I think they've now made more generic by calling themselves a new name, the Root Center.
Oh, that's okay, I've just always been seeing us anti, I'm a dispensary dude.
There was, um, discussion a while ago about C H C and, um, possibly charging for a contract, is that this?
That was this and we feel, we feel like we've got that clarified now, we've worked with them on their contract language. I would request just one amendment to the, to the motion and that would just be to say, um, pending approval by legal counsel. So we have, these, these contracts are currently with Mary Kokorski next door. So the contracts may need, need to be amended slightly after your vote, but that, that would only be with the advice of counsel.
Uh, so, uh, we would reset, rescind the motion, um, to make the amendment?
I think whoever made the original motion can just say, I'll amend my motion to include, uh, as per legal counsel.
Who made that motion?
Wasn't you tied?
I did, okay. I'm going to amend my original motion to say pending legal review.
Thank you.
The board accepts the contract between C S D N B and Root Center for Advanced Recovery, C M H A, Klingberg Family Centers, and Community Health Center.
Is there?
And then you need another second.
Second?
Second.
Are all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Uh, moving on to item G, uh, approval for the general proposal application between C S D N B and Connecticut State Department of Education for Program Enhancement Project Grants Adult Education in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. Uh, do you have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, discussion.
As I wrote to you in the memo, this is slightly unusual, we don't typically come to you for grant applications, but this federal grant specifically asked that the board approve it before we even file the application. Of course, per board policy, if we receive the grant, we'll come back to you for grant acceptance.
This has to do with adult ed, not necessarily this grant. When we met on Saturday, I wanted to mention that for the strategic plan, that we include adult ed. Cause I was seeing, this is a way of catching those people who leave here without the skills to function out in society. I think we should have, give some classes in adult ed that if you graduate from a brand high school and you still would like to include your reading and math, that we could have some classes. And we used to have that, so I think that we need to do something like that.
They're called like enhancement classes, is that what it was called?
Or enrichment, something.
Enrichment, yeah.
I thought they were called like that.
We used to call them rich.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, moving on to consent agenda, are there any items anyone would like to take off consent?
Motion to separate J J.
J J. Any other items? Okay, uh, let's face the chair, would you introduce the motion, please?
So, need a motion to approve bid award between C S D N B and Gritten Roots to provide students with emotional and academic support, expand students' relationships with peers, teachers and community at Gettner Elementary for eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. Do I have a motion?
Summon.
Second. Discussion.
I'll just share, um, I will be abstaining from this. Uh, if you remember one month or two months ago, uh, this is, um, the grant that was received by the Connecticut Department of Agriculture, um, to help fund, uh, the portion of the summer program that Roots participates in.
Roots versus Root.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're not a mental health service.
Yeah, you're not dispensing.
We're not dispensing any drugs or.
Vegetables and fruit.
Medicinal herbs maybe.
That's what they're called.
You have a motion and a second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? I will abstain. And so we'll.
Two of a second.
Two abstentions.
I'm sorry.
Three abstentions. All right, cut to you, sir.
All right, uh, motion to pass the consent agenda?
Summon.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, consent passes? Any other, ooh, yeah, any other, um, business?
Any funny business that's a lot.
Any other business? No other business?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, I, we are adjourned.